It's now the order, now called this commission, board of commissioners.
Okay, so thank you, Chairman. Uh, full invitation, I'll call one after one before we get out of here. Another one again, one for me, but all good to find.
As, as happens sometimes with people in ministry, something comes out of that field. So we've got a task, just to be honest, now, there is no one I can get there, so I'm on the pitch there. That's great. Heavenly Father, we praise you and we worship you. We thank you for this nation in which we live, this state in which we live, this county in which we live, and the municipalities within the county. We thank you for our Father, and we pray for the people in the governing bodies, especially here tonight, this commission. Uh, we pray that people give them wisdom, understanding, grace, and if there's disagreement, forgiveness when it seems like it can't be, that love and joy, that they have the opportunity to serve the people in this county, and they would do so justly, with the blood in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This time I'll also call and talk to the chair, and he will be there to play.
I'm going to declare this to be filed by the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, uh, we have a roll call, so if there will be any... At this time, I'll ask for the approval of the agenda, or make a motion to approve the agenda with these changes. We'll take off the agenda number, uh, out of eight, out of L, and then, and how, we do not have, or we have what, or make a wishful vote, we do not yet have any vote, so I'll get that for this committee to really, uh, to correct the question. And then, uh, uh, I would to on ten, review, but which in our seat, to pull that resolution. Um, we, uh, our two committee chair people that are involved in the seat, and, uh, finance and PNC, we love that, and we've got some, may review that to, do some final to that, so, uh, we'll look at it, just back on page, table four, asking, whatever, but I want to pull.
Well, those of you who came here, can you guys close to the front? That's certainly very near you, back there, loud, we've got the volume up, or the background is big loud. If you can hear what you want to listen to from the front, maybe hear a little better, we appreciate it.
Now, we've got monitors over there, I don't think they're working that well, or or radio, whatever, but, anyway, hopefully, man.
We've tried getting, that's better.
I'll talk a little faster.
There you go.
I'll speak a little louder, can you hear me then? Okay, alright.
We know where you sit, there turds.
So again, I'll start back over again, to, I make motion to approve the agenda with these changes, to delete under eight, uh, L, and then, making those two committees off the table for points tonight. And then on ten, C, uh, to remove that resolution for consideration tonight, we've got a little tweaking to do, or a couple of points on that, okay, and we reviewed that some in our caucuses last night, and I know the rule on that question, I think on that, and I know Telom did it on some of that, so we've got to re-tweak some of that, and revisit a couple things there. And then, uh, I'll be adding to the agenda, that under new business, ten, L, uh, discussion of the Telom Manchester Coffee County Joint Public Safety Training Center, file a parcel that will be, an industrial would be set aside to construct a training center, I'll give you more information on that later, and we'll be simply asking for a, just an agreement, uh, the commission to proceed with that, to put that in place. Uh, they've laid extensive groundwork on that, and we've put, uh, talking about a grant application, and we've got to apply for grants by sometime in October, Chief, and so we've got to get that on the agenda tonight, because I mean, it's no brainer, it's certainly a good service for our chairman, and then as these firemen are practicing, and practicing, and training, and whatever, hopefully in time, with the ISO, Insurance Service Office, the way they evaluate that, whatever, hopefully in this time and time, this may get some of the fire premiums will pay, out of the county down a bit, which are paid. So that's part of the purpose, that have better training and safer emergency force. And then, uh, ten, uh, G, uh, to add, uh, EMIF, those capital letters, electronic monitoring and digitized firm, to review that. So, um, I'm asking for, um, those changes. Do we have any other suggested changes?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to delete A B, please, to be moved to the next conditioners meeting, since we don't have all of our conditioners here.
To A B? We've got to do that according to statute, we've got 120 days to get that done, and so if we delay that till November, we'll exceed you 120 days.
But let me also clarify, because we discussed this, and we made it a point, to make sure that we all had the same agenda, that we're all deleting and adding, are we talking about September the 10th, at 6:00 PM, agenda number one?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
And this was sent to the table.
So I made a motion to delete that, so do we not vote on that?
What we actually need is a motion on what the mayor has suggested, then a second. Then if any of you folks want to change, or anything else to change, that would be the time for you to do that. The first thing we need is, is a motion, which we don't have yet.
We didn't have any.
We didn't have.
Somebody write that out.
Oh, okay, I did that, okay. We need that in a second, before we can do the amendment.
I made motion, wait a second.
I just know that the last time, I got confused with the agenda, and I wanted to, you wanted to delete something, and I didn't want to delete it, and I got lost. So I just want to make sure I get this one.
With the motion and...
This is the only agenda voting, this is number one.
Yeah, with the motion and the second, being made, uh, the commission will now make amendments, before you vote on this.
Okay, so what's...
If you want to let go of the...
Then yes, I'd like to make a motion, please, to delete A B until we have a full commission.
Okay. Let me just share with the full commission that in this TCA code, this says the county commission must fill a vacancy within 120 days, receiving notice from the county clerk. Um, so, so we need to take that into account, is what... Okay, so we have a motion, amend it.
I did say, no, I did not. Okay, it says, uh, election for District 8C. So mine says, 8B is for the District 8C.
Right.
So I want, I'm making a motion, not to vote on it.
Right. And I was counting on that, or stating that, reading to you that what the guidelines we have, it says in section that must fill a vacancy within 120 days, so, anyway.
Am I allowed to make a comment on that?
Sure.
Okay, I thought we were supposed to get notification from the clerk's office, I remember getting the notification from Roxanne, but not from the clerk's office. I believe that's what C CAS does.
It says, you get a notice from, from the county clerk, unless during the time there's a general election schedule, which is not, not very clear. Okay, so we've got that down as a, that we vote, we don't need.
We end up with...
In a second, we have a second.
Is the electronic voting not working on her motion to amend?
Right.
For the motion by mail is second by right, and we do have an amend button, so is that what, hell, it should be tapping, is the amend button on the motion to approve the agenda? Would that make a difference? Is there a greater force, motion to amend?
I go pretty far along the hill, here. I really question the legitimacy of the whole electronic process. I mean, technically, you should be saying, I knew that we do so, and, and a lot of times we skip that, and we just put it on there in second, and we have a motion, uh, but right now, uh, there's some, some difficulty with this process, so it's perfectly all right for her to make amendment, or at least, if somebody's second.
Okay, we have a second to that amendment?
I have a second.
Okay, okay, then do we vote on that here?
Discussion.
A discussion, brother, discussion, we have a discussion on the proposed amendment to table, and go to, delete, excuse me, delete District 8B, District 8C, till, I guess, November.
If we delete that, and we wait till November, do we...
As upon the order, the person that makes the motion has the privilege to speak her way.
Okay, I just think that we should have a full commission here to vote on it, we only have the two people, but also, again, when I was checking, I didn't receive notification from Roxanne, I did not receive notification from the county clerk, I understand it was right in the paper, but again, that was not to the commissioner from the county clerk. That was my understanding, that we were supposed to receive formal notification from this department.
Okay.
So the clock doesn't start until we receive that letter.
I'm not seeing the statute, but I would think that notification is noticed to the county, or to the, to the unit as a whole, uh, so it's, without that being read, I wouldn't know if it's still that, but obviously, everybody got a notice, oddly, because it was, it was brought up, it was actually announced, and then, and we had, I'm calling for it, and then it was, I guess, then it followed up to clerk, after it received to the mayor's office, and I think that's, would be what was read, unless it's all stuff, there's no doubt everybody knew that.
Okay, they've known about it, but once again, we did hit our eyes, and we didn't watch our teeth, so once again, we're probably gonna have to go back and amend something, because we didn't do it correctly.
Any more discussion?
Um, everyone has been notified, as Mr. Husky said, we have a need to fill the seat more than the need to make sure that we have 21, or 20 commissioners here, it's rare that we have 20 commissioners, so, and we can't be responsible to make sure that the next meeting, that we're not gonna have everybody here, and, and the people that are not here knew that we were voting on it, so if it was that important to them, they should have been here, if it's that important to you guys, then you should have talked to them about being here, but short of that, we need to fill the seat, and that I'm about our duty to that constituency group there, that they never represented it.
Any other discussions?
As stated before, are we not going to exceed the 120 days if we wait till November, and are there consequences of not filling the competition in a binding manner?
Well, that is, she said, our constituency has not been represented, but that is a technical county, uh, it is, you know, it says, it knows the county clerk, but as we said, I think everyone here knew that was announced earlier, but...
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, right, uh, on right.
You're informed of this mission, they're not doing this tonight, the evaluation of Tennessee COVID-19, is that correct?
Says, but in the, the technical county there, that it says from receiving notice from the county clerk.
Our attorney has told us that the notices that were given are sufficient, and that, is that correct, Mr. Husky?
I would think it is, if you look at the substance of awareness, last year with the key, there was a, a means that was done, the actual announcement was actually made here, clerk here, it's in front of the clerk, and everybody else, and then if the notice... It's, it's the key to getting the awareness fully across the commission, and I, and I would respect it, again, that the best way to do that's have an announcement in the, in the commission meeting, and now probably better notice as part of, right?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like that to reflect in the minutes of this meeting, that you have put us on notice, the TCA code, and our attorney advised us that the notice was appropriate and sufficient.
Okay, do the notice gotta be reflected in the minutes then?
Any other discussion? Does it want to be clear on what the vote voted, considering time?
The vote, the motion is to delay, to remove...
The motion is to amend.
To amend the agenda, but in doing that, her motion was to strike or remove 8B, the vote on the District 8C from the agenda, am I correct? So that's the clarification. Any other discussion?
So if we vote yes, then what, what did that do for us? What did that, did that delete?
If you vote yes, you'll be reporting to remove the, the 8B, District 8C, from election tonight.
But it will not...
What you've recommended.
It will not affect what he's recommending, it will not affect what he's recommending. This is just strictly an amendment to delete out of two, out of 8B, is what you've already voted.
Right. To postpone the election, to the next meeting. Any other discussion? There being none, and no votes special.
All for love, all for love.
Um, you, again, you heard the motion, the motion being to strike 8B on the voting on this tonight, and so, let's vote, please.
Can't do it yet.
Certainly.
Can't do it yet.
That's right, can't do it, gotta do a voice. Thought I hit that, sorry, well, I guess I didn't hear it. Okay, thank you, now, we're gonna vote. Will you vote on the amendment now? Okay, let's vote, please. Voting yes, you're voting to the table, but tonight, and no, you're voting to proceed with the election tonight. Everybody on, wanna change your vote?
Do yes.
Do yes, you'll get... In effect. And now, we are back to these main motions, I respect that, or we, or hear that. To amend, now with the deletion of 8L and N, removing 10C, table that for some further discussion, by vote finance and PNC, and then, putting that back on the agenda later, and then to add, uh, under new business, 10L, Telom Manchester Coffee County Joint Public Safety Training Center, and then G, the electronic monitoring and digitized firm. Any vote? Any other discussion?
Yes.
Discussion?
Yes. When we discussed in our office last night, and I want to add an item H, which is a discussion of organization of personnel compensation, we, we just want to have a brief discussion about perhaps recommending that to legislative committees, including the structure of that committee.
Restate that, Lynn, please.
We want to add item H, a discussion of the composition of personnel compensation committee.
H, 10H, new business. Competition, discussion of composition of personnel compensation committee. That's another amendment, right?
Now, that's the, the people who make the motion exactly are willing to accept that as a frame, and then they can just go ahead and do it.
I would say, I'm okay with accepting that. Do you have a second?
You're gonna make the motion, yeah.
Second, then. My, you're ready?
We'll take that.
Okay, so that's added into the other discussion. So item H is a discussion of the PNC committee reform, or discussion of that. Any other special, let's vote, please. Voting on the amended agenda. Thank you, thank you. Vote for Karen, okay? Now, a review and approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, our motion approved.
Motion.
By him, I give a moment to Lynn. Second, by Asher. Thank you, yes, thank you.
All right, number seven, resolution of memorial sympathy and commendation. We have something, but we can't report it yet, it's right now, we'll come back to it. And A, elections appointments and confirmations, no worries.
Lynn?
I'll move for proof.
Move for proof, second by Robert, thank you, discussion. There being none, let's vote, please.
Thank you, A green, District 8C.
As you know, we have a vacancy in our commission in District 8, due to the resignation and moving of Emily, we thank her for her service. Uh, going through this, we evaluated, and whatever, trying to do this totally by the book, and whatever, we did send out, uh, both our notice to that, uh, newspaper, and, uh, we said they started meeting, and so on, and we've had, we've had three, uh, people express interest in that, we encouraged them, invited them to come to a special called rural caucus meeting, and they came, and they made presentations, we have three good candidates, they did good jobs in their, their presentations, and I thank them for their willingness to serve. Now going ahead with that, uh, we're trying to jump in, and we need to, to make sure we're doing this totally by the book and doing it right, but, um, anyway, we have three nominations, or three people that came aboard the rural caucus. This time, I'm going over the floor, forward to the rural caucus, start with rural caucus, to nominations, uh, for those three, okay? So the floor is now open, and I will go around and start with District 5, Mr. Bryant, do you have a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Jeff Kill.
Okay, Mr. Jeff Kill, okay, in turn.
I nominate Tim Brown.
Okay, we have two nominations, uh, Mark.
I nominate Kevin Jordan.
Okay, good, thank you.
My nomination's for Mr. Kill.
Okay.
We have, we have three nominations.
Yeah, we got three nominations. Now, I'll open the floor for the nominations, for the floor, from the other commissions, okay? Going around with that, I will finish going around the rule, to see if there's a nomination of anyone else from the other rule commission. Okay, none, starting with Manchester, with Commissioner One, Del.
We have no additional nominations.
Todd?
No.
Telom, starting with, uh, what?
Two.
Two, okay, uh, Mark, okay. No additional nominations, so we have three nominations, this time, I will, um, ask, open the floor up, the podium up, for, uh, go, for the, the three individuals to give a three-minute presentation, uh, three minutes on it, so it'll be time, so do a three-minute, uh, presentation to the public, to speak to the commission, as to your, your concerns, your resume, or whatever you want to share, for, you know, three minutes. So, uh, the first nomination was Dr. Kill, so I'll call for Dr. Kill, if he would, if this county's coming and address the commission body, we thank you for your willingness to serve, and, uh, so with that, you're ready?
Well, first, I'd like to, slightly, I appreciate your consideration, um, really interested in, um, learning more about the process, and so I would be pulled today, if that's the way it turns out. Um, I didn't have any kind of prepared speech, so I guess I'll just give a little history about my background. Um, I was raised on a dairy farm on, in, in Coffee County, in the horse mill area, um, kind of in the outskirts of Manchester city limits, if anybody knows where the 84 lumber company used to be there on Highway 85, that's my family farm, you can see the saddle in the background, that's where I grew up milking cows, um, learned a lot of valuable lessons there on that farm, really enjoyed, enjoyed my, I guess, um, in that, in that capacity, and I'd probably still be milking cows if my parents hadn't, hadn't sold the dairy cow. We still do farm that area, and we switched over to be cattle now, and, uh, a little less, a little less intense. Um, so I went to East Coffee... So I went to East Coffee Elementary School and graduated from Coffee County, Central High. Graduated from Montlo, did my undergraduate work at MPSU, and I graduated vet school at UT. Been a veterinarian for fifteen years. I moved straight back out after vet school. I went to work with Gary Nestor at All Creatures, they're on, on Highway fifty-five going out of Manchester Ford Lake Memorial. We have grown that business pretty substantially since I've been, been a partner there. I bought into the practice about ten or eleven years ago. And we actually started, we started a new clinic in Montego, and we purchased a clinic in Telom about a year ago, Dr. Wendy's office, on West Lincoln. And so we expanded that quite a bit. So I've got a lot of business, I've had a lot of business lessons in, in that expansion. Married my high school sweetheart, so she's a Coffee Countyan or Hillsburyan, I guess you could say. One minute. Um, I'm a, I've got two kids, they go to New Union Elementary School there in our district. I'm a member of our board of directors on First Vision Banks Board, if you know that bank. We've got offices in Manchester, Telom, and Decker, and Murmuran. And so I've learned a lot about business and financing and that dynasty. And I'm just, I enjoy challenges and, and learning new processes, and so I'm really interested in, in coming on commission for that reason. I'd like to contribute. Appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Kill. Second nomination was Mr. Brown. Again, I appreciate your willingness of these individuals to take advantage and serve. Mr. Brown?
For those of y'all in the audience that don't know me, my name's Tim Brown, I'm a lifelong resident of Manchester. Been here all my life. I don't want to take up a lot of your time, I've been to each of y'all's caucus meetings and asked you questions and, and whatever my resume with y'all. I've been involved in the county government for a number of years, about six, seven years, come to the commission meetings, bringing up issues and other issues and the, and the problems we've got in Coffee County. And I want to listen to the citizens of Coffee County and do what's best for the majority of citizens and not do, not make my opinion on just a select few. I had a dismember, I was talking up there, so. We need to make Coffee County more business friendly, we're not very business friendly. The commission's done a great job, they've done a lot of changes and really done good over the last couple of years. But they're still looking for improvement. We need to be proactive. We need to just do what's best for Coffee County. We've got to get the taxes, we don't need a tax increase, but we need growth to get more tax money brought in so we can make the raises to the county employees and do what we need to be doing. And last, I want to thank Dr. Kill and Mr. York for showing interest and wanting to work with the commission and trying to get involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Thirdly, Mr. York.
I would like to thank everyone for, for having us, and it is an honor to be nominating these other two gentlemen, Dr. Kill and Mr. Brown, they're fine, fine people. And so I don't really feel there's any way that Coffee County can lose in this situation. And I am a lifelong resident of Coffee County. I grew up here, went to school here, went to East Coffee, graduated from high school here. My father, Sammy York, ran a business, he probably had him fix a TV at some point in time if you have been around York's TV service on Highway fifty-five. And I grew up out in the North Mall area myself. I've worked in law enforcement for about a little over twelve years, mainly been in Warren County with that. But I live here in Manchester, my wife's an educator, so I have a, you know, an interest in, in local, you know, the county government and how things go, because I've worked in it. I was a school resource officer for the majority of my time, taught day or, you know, picking the schools. So you see a lot of, you know, a lot of things like that, you know, I care about the community, I care about Coffee County, I just want to, to serve, you know. Ronald Reagan, as if the scariest words in the English language were, I'm from the government and I'm here to help. Well, but that is the gist, the reason that I want to do this is I want to serve. You know, it's about serving the community and giving the people a representative, to be transparent, to, you know, work with other county leaders and do the best job that we can to give the taxpayers money so we don't have to ask for more unless it was something that could not be avoided. And, you know, I've, I've been married for twelve years and I have a little girl, you know, she's, you know, someone to go to the New Union School and, you know, then grow up there. I want it to be good for her, you know, I want her to grow up in the same loving community, you know, and have all the things that she can have here. And, you know, for it to be safe, and, I mean, I, what I bring, I have a bachelor's degree from Lee University, Cleveland, Tennessee. My bachelor's degree is from Liberty University, and criminal justice and public administration, which, you know, this is public administration, so, you know, that's something I'd like to do to help work with local economic development and work with, you know, Sheriff Barton and District Attorney and all of, on criminal justice and trying to, you know, keep those, keep the cost down, keep the population in jail down the best that we can. And I thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. York. And again, I want to thank all three of you for your willingness to take the time and make a pledge to serve in Coffee County. At this time, we cannot have a secret ballot, that's my statute, and when they're achieved, we cannot, we don't have a guess or no, so the chair will recognize Mr. Brown.
I'm just, when we think of the question, our nominees, I have one question that I want to ask all three, if that's possible. Do any of you have any dealings with the county, whether it be direct or indirect, receiving compensation from us? And if so, are you willing to give up that business to serve on this board?
No, I don't.
Okay. Not yours, I mean, not yours.
We do work for the animal shelter, for the animal control officers.
Well, according to C T S nine oh three, we do have a, a rule that you cannot receive any compensation from county legislative bodies, other officials. We receive any type of financial interest or compensation, whether it be business or personal. So therefore, if you are elected, you would have to resign from that, of receiving those compensations. Or you would be in another jurisprudence.
I would challenge that because they do spay and neuter work for animal control at a very discount price that is hard to be at other vets. Now, I don't know if other vets can do it for the county, but we have huge animal control problems in this county. All Creatures Veterinary Service, there are six vets there. And that is a business that has offered to do, and they do tons of rework for this county, and no one says anything about it, but I, I'm well aware of that. I probably actually is also, people that know what's going on with that animal control. And the services that they provide far out, out, over exceed what you're talking about there for the business that they do. And to dispel us, someone who's doing a community service isn't dis served.
I think at that point, it may really open the door for anybody and everybody to violate this.
You're nitpicking them.
This is a question. I just like to follow the rules, and in the past, maybe we haven't, and so I'm working it up. I'm making it as a notification to all other commissioners that are here, so if you want to violate it, that is your right to vote for that. But there are other veterinarians in the county besides All Creatures. They're a great company, I'm not saying that they're not.
Other veterinarians also service, but they far exceed because they're...
I don't know that we've actually did it out to see if other veterinarians would do the same service or not. I mean, we do other stations as a bit out, like we said, out.
At this time, I want to ask for a county attorney to weigh in on this question.
I have a sitting statute.
I appreciate the permission to break that and work it up, we want to address that before we do it around here.
This is pretty general, I'm almost, can almost kind of pick everybody out to some degree, but let me say in regard to this vote, if the applicant wishes the position, this can, I don't know that we'll have a definitive answer on whether or not this will block that service or not. But, but if he is interested in the position and wants his name to stay in, there's nothing to forbid this party from making a selection. If it's one of the others, that limit, if it's him, they make that decision, and we look at this in more detail, if he has a conflict out, then he, he'd have to turn it down or decline the service. I don't think, I don't think with that looking at this photo, we can analyze that and give you, but there's nothing preventing him from being selected and then if there's something between the statute, if we give him doing what he's got, he'd have to make that decision to take that down. I don't think it worries him or the community or the board.
Okay, thank you, Bob, for your interpretation of that. Okay, now, the third candidate, Mr. York.
No, I do not receive any compensation from the county, directly or indirectly.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, we will open the floor for voting, and this will be by, by a voice vote. And I'm asking Aaron Burke and Donna to record those votes, okay? So this time, since this is a rule position, I'm going to call upon our rural commissioners to vote first. At this time, I'll call upon Mr. Brown, he's our first in numbers, the first commissioner of rural office, so I'll call upon him for his, his, uh, nomination, vote.
I vote for Mr. Kill.
Mr. Kill?
Dr. Jeff Kill.
Dr. Kill, okay. Martin?
Dr. Kill.
David?
Dr. Kill.
Scotty? Mr. Brown, okay, Jim?
Tim Brown.
Ashley?
Dr. Kill.
All right.
Tim Brown.
Missy?
Tim Brown.
Okay. Uh, go back to one.
Tim Brown.
Two, or three?
Tim Brown.
Okay, now back to Tillon Homer, what?
Brown.
Brown, Tim.
Kill.
Okay, Kill.
Brown.
Okay, uh, Barbara?
Jeff Kill.
Okay. Okay.
Kill.
Lynn? Okay. All that, we tally up the votes. And we've got to get, to be nominated, a person must concede, must have eleven votes, okay? Must have eleven votes. And if a person is a candidate and doesn't have eleven votes, then we'll, I'll eliminate the, since we've got three parties, three persons, I'll eliminate the one who lost vote and we'll vote again. Okay, all we can do, we talked about this before, we have to, now to address this, and we, the only thing we do is we'll start over, vote again. Pardon? Okay. Yeah, there's no change of vote, I'll give anyone time to change the vote here. No change of vote, okay? That, Mr. York will be eliminated then, now we have two candidates, so we'll start the process again. And I'll call upon Mr. Bobby Brown to start the vote again.
Mr. Kill.
Dr. Jeff Kill.
Okay, Martin?
Mr. Kill.
David?
Mr. Kill.
Scotty?
Mr. Brown.
Tim? Ashley?
Mr. Kill.
Martin?
Mr. Brown?
Missy?
Mr. Brown.
Missy, uh, okay, Ellen?
Mr. Brown.
Okay, Todd?
Mr. Brown.
Okay, what?
Brown.
Tim? Okay.
Dr. Kill.
All right, all right. Okay. Martin? There's no point in that, it's all, if there's ten, ten, then I don't think you want to drink the right time. But you've got to have eleven votes, so that would be a, all right. Ten votes, okay? We'll try again. Bobby Brown?
Dr. Jeff Kill.
Dr. Jeff Kill.
Martin?
Dr. Kill.
Mr. Brown?
Dr. Kill.
Scotty? Yeah? All right, Ashley?
Dr. Kill.
You and Brown?
Mr. Brown.
Brown.
Uh, Ellen?
Mr. Brown.
Todd?
Mr. Brown.
Okay, Brown?
Brown.
Brown? Barbara?
Kill. Kill.
Brown? All right.
Kill.
Okay.
I'd like to say that's the reason I seconded the amendment to remove this, to reenact a full house, because I anticipate this very problem.
We've gone three rounds, we've tried to vote, so we have, I don't, do not have eleven votes, so at this time, we'll move on to eight C. Over to the ladies, Bill, the November, for commission. Uh, eight C, Chairman, we have a nomination for Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, please. I'd like to nominate, here to go and help the chairman.
Uh, most of the second, discussion? No discussion, let's vote, please. Thank you for your vote, and I look forward to working with you again and serving the people of our county for the best of my ability, and I appreciate your confidence in it. And then we'll move on to eight D, Chairman, vote him, that is a Manchester... Chairman, Pope Tim, that is a Manchester, that Manchester rotation, and we have a recommendation for, uh, from, uh, Helen on Chairman Pope Tim, that being?
That would be Commissioner Hogs, please.
Mr. Jordan Hogs, so we have, uh, that and that. Does a motion? Have a section to that motion? Discussion. No discussion, there being none, let's vote, please. Farming area, and I've asked Mr. Pedgo, he again served as our Farming area, so I put that in the form of, and I appreciate his willingness to serve all these years, and you may, or may not know this, but the fee he's paid on that, he donates that to future Farmers of America. And I appreciate his investment. His investment in the youth of our nation and the people of our nation. But he, uh, he has served with distinction and well, and I'm so glad he's here. So with that in mind, uh, second to motion.
My vote is a cool one. Right, for motion. My rights and my type of, I include, second by, okay.
I miss, thank you. So I vote in second, discussion. Thank you for the, uh, discussion. There being none, let's vote, please. Budget Finance Committee, those are standing, these we're going through now are standing committees. Those are comprised of five commissioners, uh, two from Tillahom, two represented from Rural Caucus, and one from Manchester Caucus. So at this time, I'll ask the, uh, those committee chairpersons to report as to who they are recommending or passing on to certain of those committees. Budget Finance, I'll call upon, uh, Manchester first.
Our motion is a recommendation, Mr. Commissioner Hogs, again, please.
Okay, Rural Caucus.
Rural Caucus certainly, Commissioner Boris and Commissioner Bryan.
David Orton and Bobby Bryan, and Tillahom, Dwight.
Uh, that would be Lynn Seaborn and so.
And Dwight Hill, so, I would commission that. So we have motion, I'll regard it as a motion. Okay, thank you, my vote, and second by, my, thank you, so I vote in second, discussion. There being none, let's vote, please. Sixteen, yes, thank you. Motion, yes. Let's slide the committee. Uh, I'll call next on Jim Fielding for rural recommendations, Rural Caucus, excuse me, Rural Committee.
Rural Caucus recommends Commissioner Ray and Commissioner Taylor.
Okay. So those are the recommendations from the Rural Caucus, okay? Uh, Rural, Tillahom. Tim. Your nomination for, let's slide the committee.
Let's slide the committee. The, uh, Till and Stubblefield.
No, not Jackie.
No.
Barbara.
Rosemary Cracker. Barbara Paulson. Okay, it'd be Rosemary Cracker.
Rosemary.
No, that doesn't, you put your last down in the last minute, Rosemary Cracker.
So again, that is Till and Stubblefield and Rosemary Cracker, right, and Rural? We're not Rural. No, we're back to Tillahom.
I'm sorry, I thought you were helping welfare. Uh, for let's slide, it is Barbara, posted, and Rosemary Cracker.
Yes, that's what I thought, okay. Those two. Okay, and again, Rural was what, yes?
Rural was Commissioner Ray and Commissioner Taylor.
Right, okay. And, uh, mention, Ellen.
Senate Congress is nominating Commissioner DeBellas again.
Let's slide. Okay, we have motion, uh, okay. A motion to approve. Motion by Ashlyn and second by, yes, discussion. There being none, let's vote, please. Now, Tim. Hill, Webber, and Regrator. Okay, Tim.
Big Jackie Duncan and Till and Stubblefield.
Okay. Now, mention, Ellen.
Our nomination is Jimmy Collins.
Right, okay, and Rural.
Ashley Crapp and Scotty Taylor.
Okay. And motion, to approve, that's the thing, and vote by Ashlyn. Second by, okay, discussion. There being none, let's vote, please. Now, these are standing committees, comprised of five commissioners on each committee. Amy, fifteen, yes, thank you, okay. After that, like, uh, Rural, I think. Jim.
Dennis Hunt and Jimmy Fielding.
Okay, and now, uh, Tillahom.
Tim Stubblefield and Rosemary Cracker.
Right, and, uh, or mention.
Commissioner DeBellas.
Okay, so you hear those slides, and approve these, uh, Tim. Vote for my business, second, and second by, all right, okay. Vote for second, uh, discussion. There being none, let's vote, please. All right, now, law enforcement. Uh, Helen, Manchester.
Commissioner Rocket.
Okay, Todd Rocket. Uh, Rural, Jim.
Rural, Justin Dooling and Mrs. Keel.
Good deal, okay, and Tillahom.
Till and Stubblefield and Tim Stubblefield.
Okay, and I'm thankful for the service that law enforcement committee renders to this county, and for all our comedians, but, and, uh, motion, uh, by Charlotte, second by, and I'm, thank you, discussion. There being none, let's vote, please. Good thing, yes, thank you. Lynn, excuse me, did I miss eight, what I go?
No, you said.
Pardon?
No.
Okay, good, I'm down, oh, I missed, okay, good, thank you. Now, firstly, our compensation committee, and we have on the wake-up of that is the county mayor, and that's the format of the, whatever decided upon by the commission years ago when that was established, and three commissioners, and three elected officials or department heads. And as department heads or elected officials, uh, I'm requesting to appoint Alan Lindon, who has served before, he's our DMA and Homeland Security Director, and Andy Farah, uh, in place of Sheriff's Department, and he's our Lexicommission, uh, the Chair of that, and who's my third one, Diane Arrows, uh, with the Oklahoma Comms Center. Okay, so those three, now we have three commissioners, uh, we, are those three willing to serve if re-elected or appointed?
I understand that Mr. Hogs would want to remain on it.
Okay, Mr. Hogs, okay, Ashlyn.
Yes, I would like to remain on the commission.
Thank you, I thought so, and Mr. Stogel. Okay, the three commissioners that have been serving, and I'd like to make sure that service are willing to remain, so with that, we have a motion to approve those that presented. Uh, motion by, uh, Charlotte, second by these, we have discussion. There being none, then let's vote, please. Good thing, yes, okay, thank you. Okay, M, Judicial Commissioner, uh, Law Enforcement Committee, Missy, has recommended, uh, as a part-time Judicial Commissioner, uh, Mr. Bobby Taylor, and so I'll put that, uh, we have a motion to approve. Pardon? It's pardon.
We took it off. We took that off.
Yes, we took it off, excuse me, we took it off, we took L and M off, so now we're on to M, excuse me, Judicial Commissioner, and that's a recommendation from Law Enforcement to, uh, go for Mr. Bobby Taylor as a part-time Judicial Commissioner. Uh, is he in addition or replacing someone on this? Replacing whom?
I have that, Mr. Perry.
Okay, yeah, he's replacing, okay. And I appreciate what our Judicial Commissioner do in their service, that's an interesting service, but, uh, okay, so Mr. Taylor, we have a motion, I'll, I'll raise a motion.
Say.
Okay, I got motion by, both ready, and second by, okay, and, uh, discussion. Okay, there being none, let's vote, please. Eighteen, yes, thank you, thank you. Now, eight, oh, Central Tennessee Planning Region Board, uh, Mr. Lee Duckey's been serving in that position about two times a year, so it's been recommended that Mr. Duckey continue to serve, if he would serve. So he said he would continue to serve, so I'll place his name in our relation for, uh, to continue on that board, he was supposed to get, okay, I vote. Vote by Ashlyn, second by, we're ready, thank you. So any discussion?
Is he a pre-law or just goes and got married?
He had a birthday, so, I have a birthday, that's what he does. Thank you. I have a birthday. You know, I don't like to do old, you know, have a birthday, thank you for your service. Okay, uh, the vote?
Mr. Chairman, I'm, if anybody wants to make a note on their standard, that is Central Tennessee Solid Waste Planning Region Board, not to be confused with a planning commission.
Yeah, there's solid waste, solid waste, thank you. Let's vote, please.
strength letter. And this just needs the motion acknowledging that, um, the commission received this letter, this is one of our requirements for a three-star.
A motion to acknowledge receiving this letter. A motion?
Vote by, uh, two, I should go over here, second by, right, thank you.
Thank you. My discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'd like for us to, uh, look at what this letter is committing to, and I'd like to clarify this with our budget director, Ms. Edg, one is, we're saying that a debt management process is complicated, is on file with offices and control of the treasury, and that we reviewed that in a meeting on January the eighth, two thousand and thirteen, is that correct? Is that?
Yes, it is, we also reviewed it during our latest Fondry Sunday as well.
And the other item is annual cash flow forecast, it says prior to the issuance of debt, an annual cash flow forecast was prepared for the appropriate fund and submitted to the Comptroller's Office, and that was reviewed by the Fullback County Commission on June the twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, is that correct?
That's correct, and that also is done during the budget process as well, and when we give the refund, you can fill American bonds.
And then the, uh, third item, third item is, uh, confirmation of documented internal controls, and it says that all county offices are required to develop a documented system of internal controls for all offices, funds, and departments under the authority of administration of elected officials in the county, County County. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
I appreciate you confirming those, and some people may, in the thread of general comments, at time, from time to time, in regard to operation of county government, and I wanted the people and our minutes to reflect that those things have been done. So sometimes some of these comments need to be backed up more with facts about what our government's doing and the way it was operated. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and, uh, I will attest to that, that, uh, the city's, or that, whatever, and the internal controls that's required by the state of Tennessee that we have documented, and that we, we have internal control on the Marcus Open District, and we hear through those, and that's in the audit process every year, so.
And I've got to call, uh, proud that we are three-star certified, we just need to get this celebrated and, and the minutes of this meeting.
So I have a motion to, we have a motion for appropriate and recommended by, discuss it, we propose, but. There being none, let's vote, please. Thank you.
Resolution, TMB, um, TMB Resolution two thousand and nineteen, nineteen, resolution to request members of the legislative delegation to the General Assembly to co-sponsor and support the joint resolution to restore the emergency communi- communication service charge, the nine-one-eight.
Okay, thank you on that, uh, Ms. Argra, you presented that to us earlier, and, um, you have that in front of you, um, as restoring or increasing the fee, um, monthly charges from dollar sixteen back to one fifty on that, and that's been reviewed by the legislature, and so that's a motion to, and other counties have been asked to approve a similar
If this was that in our June twenty-fifth, was that a budgeted? Yes.
So we, in our current budget, will reflect twenty thousand dollars for this.
Yes.
However, this resolution will make a commitment to the next three budgets of twenty thousand dollars per year. The commitment is for twenty thousand for a year.
That's correct.
And certainly, I feel that we should be doing this because of the amount of money that we can get to improve the county railroad system is significant for the amount to be invested. And I believe White and Warren County have also approved this for contingency of the railroad.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That is correct. And Tri-County Railroad Authority, that's a short line consisting of fifty-nine miles of water from Telom, to Coffee, Warren, and White County. And that, those trains take heart and life to Bridgestone, critically important, critically important for our counties. And anyway, with that in mind, we have, I couldn't believe the number of railroad, I mean the bridges that we have in this city. Wow, blew my mind, there's several. But anyway, that will, that money, that had been sequestered by the state years ago. And the, that's, it still wasn't there. The counties put in money to match that, so we can go ahead and do that. So that bridge money for Tri-County could be putting in to repair the bridges. So, uh... I have a motion, a second, any other discussion? Now I'll call the vote, let's vote please. And it's interesting to go to those forty meetings at Bridgestone, three county mayors and others to go do that and see what goes on. And that's another one we're all getting, the railroads, critically important service in the present day. Thank you, yes, thank you.
T N E. Budget amendments.
I just noticed on the, on the resolution, I actually drew that math limit first thing up. And it was submitted, and I just, and it was determined that they didn't need a resolution to pound, and I noticed that they only, it was like April two thousand nineteen, two thousand and eight, four weeks ago.
Okay, thank you, thank you. September, okay. Reasonably chance, thank you. Thank you. September eighteen, one day before September eleven. Okay, thank you. Well, I think that's...
Okay, I've got four. They, these have all been approved by budget and finance. First one is general capital projects, one seventy-one, twenty twenty-one. These are three projects that are listed in the description. So decrease in the sum of fund balance of one hundred forty-seven thousand, one fifty-two. That leaves the fund balance of capital projects at four hundred fifty-three thousand, seven eighty-eight. Number two is for public rural capital projects fund for a fire hydrant. This is a reduction of three thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars of the fund balance. That leaves the fund balance at two million, two thousand and forty dollars.
We have fire hydrant, three on sixteen, all over.
Next one is one-on-one, twenty twenty-three. These are both expenditures on restricted asset funds. So there's no effect on fund balance. One is a motor vehicle purchase for the property assets, and another is for supplies for the administration of the sexual offender registry. The last one is the school board, number one forty-one, twenty twenty-one. This is an deduction on the side of fund balance of two hundred thousand, increase in legal fees of the same. That does reduce the fund balance. I don't, I don't have their fund balance in front of me. But... Clear with me? Probably a table. I'm not sure, um, unless Lisa has it.
Before the reduction, it would be about half of six million, so it would be reducing it down to a half of four million, and a sum of dollars.
Like I said, these are all being approved by budget and finance.
Right, and school systems represented, thank you. Okay. Maybe I have a motion to approve the amendments that presented? Second, vote by David. Second by Ashley, thank you. Discussion?
On the last, uh... On the last amendment, two hundred thousand dollars from the board of education, that was from a suit that was settled under former director of schools, not attorney.
True. That correct, Ashley? Well, it was...
The suit was filed.
Filed.
Correct.
But it was settled just recently. Thank you. That's correct. Any other discussion? Let's vote please.
T N F. Discussion of Joint Training Center.
Okay. There's been a lot of discussion on this. We have our fire departments, our Manchester Fire Department chiefs here, and we have any of our locals here or not. But anyway, this is, you know, commissioners have received, I think, talked to that, show it, we have a lot of discussion on it. This was actually presented last Thursday to county law. And we had discussion on that, tremendous discussion, and we, we had still a motion to go and approve of that and send that on to the board commission for approval. And we've got a lot of discussions on this. This is, this thing's evolving, I understand that now, keep the Telom, there's a five, five percent matching is required. And Telom has agreed to apply for that grant. And on the grant, that's got to be submitted in October, and with the process of all this, even if approved, it's going to take a few months to get this. And this is a picture here, you can't see that, but of the facility. This will be on five acres from the joint industrial park, provided by the joint industrial apartment, county land provided by the joint industrial park. And we basically are just simply needing, the park development committee wants to know that the county legislative body is okay with five acres in the joint industrial park used for training facilities for fire departments. This is contingent on the grant application being awarded. We discussed that so much, that's about as best I can do to replicate that now. But with that in mind, we need a, simply a motion to proceed with that, that, I know a lot of questions left, we've vetted that, it's been reviewed, but... And we have a motion by, and second by, is it approved? Thank you. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions. So about the training center ended in the joint park, so that's county property, right? So how do we handle the structure? Who is the owner of the structure, what's built? Is that county property, or is that Telom, the city property? How is all that going to be handled in the future if this does go forward?
Some of those are, some of those places are getting...
I would like to comment. The city was presented to Capitol out late. As you know, the industrial parks were to be located, those properties set aside for commercial and industrial development, since this is actually not in those two categories. The industrial board wanted the county to approve that, land use. So the way we, way it's been conveyed to us, we thought the county would be applying for the grant, but I think that Telom City is the one that's actually going to apply for it, because it's felt that they have a better chance of actually obtaining the grant. The, every one of our first responders within the county, or local municipalities, of Telom and Manchester, will benefit from this. They offer, they are required actually to train in unison many times. They have to train together. The only, I think people seem one of them between Deason and Union, Mobile, Bigwood, then there's, right, the county has acquired something like this. But our first responders can't leave the county to go train together, because that leaves the store unattended. So it makes sense for us to have this. This is a motion of intent, where there's so many details to be worked out, we're trying to, so many times, we're pushed for a deadline on the grant. That's all this is about. Let's get this, take the path, get the grant, we'll work out the details later. And it will be easier not to have to work out the details.
Our chief said we've vetted that and come together and discuss that many, many times. Ashley?
And I think Jim brought up this question a little bit. Will the base or the air force also be participating with this? Is it going to benefit them as well?
Not normally, no, they're...
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? A lot of details to be worked out there. Apparently, being no other comments or questions to end, let's vote please. Chris, I hope you've got that motion down to the spirit of using it. A lot of details to be worked out. Thank y'all. And I want to thank our first responders for their investment in safety of the system of our county. And I wouldn't, and I haven't heard as how Tony's doing, but our chief has said he fell last week off of a truck.
Yes, we did. And I talked to some of his people today. He had a pin bitten in his leg. And believe it or not, he hasn't got a cast on, he's got a band-aid on his leg. He's got some crutches and he's probably going into physical therapy probably next week.
Broke both legs and bones in his leg?
He broke his tibia in his leg, he was still walking, popping the leg into the thing. And he's got like a band-aid on him now, no cast.
Wow.
Lockdown crutches and...
Wow.
It's a lot better progress than now that it was.
Yeah. Other than that, it wasn't looking too good, but, yeah. They were attending a breast fight and having access. So I want to thank our first responders for all that they do and what they do every day for us to provide or second. So thank y'all. Thank you, Chief.
T N G. Electronic monitoring indemnity, indemnity.
This is quite, and hectic involved in whatever it is, but it's been reviewed by the law well. This is on the electronic monitoring fund. And the state has been paying for some of that in the past. Their fund is, their fund is drained, and they were peeling out to counties to anticipate ending that. I did some research with C-Tech, and apparently, we could not find that, we haven't been able to determine the number of indigent residents we have in county. This is for them, but there's only seven counties, that's the last total I got, only seven counties that have opted into this. And most counties are off and down, but we've got a September, or was it September fifteenth? I don't, I got, I didn't, I, now it's been extended to June twenty-sixth, I believe. But I was concerned about this last night, and I think this census was, the census pretty well from the committees last night, I'm not speaking for them, the same age not opting dogged out, been involved in that. So with that in mind, I, I need to report something to the state tomorrow as to your contention. I've got to contact the director's professional colleagues tomorrow and to give him a statement as to are we often in or out. So, Mr. Miller? We have a motion?
I'll make a motion without that.
A motion without that, do we ask? Second?
Second.
Second by... Thank you. Thank you. Discussion?
Um, your opinion on this?
This is not what it seems to be on the services, it's the monies that would be more or less for the judiciary to determine, the judges and probation would have to determine a, a person of indigency would be able to put the money to pay for a breathalyzer, or what we know as a airlock machine, or if we had an electronic monitoring program here in our county for either pre-trial or post-trial people, then there would be a process just like is determined with our public, to appoint the public defender to represent. This would also take place as to have monies to pay for their monitoring services. We're, this, this at first looked like monies that they were going to give us to create electronic monitoring service, but it's, it's a, it's a subcategory, subcategory program in there, but it's a little more convoluted than what it is. So we, we don't have this program, and like the mayor said, it's a candidate in the state that's involved in that, and I'm sure there will be a time to come back to that later as we grow. That's needed, we'll come back.
And I would mention that we will be reviewing a lot recently in the future as to probation and program, using Michael braces, and the monitoring more forward, I think for what about seven dollars that he's here. Thank you. You can have the Michael braces, that's a little cheaper than what we're paying now to the parfrated person. And we've got a lot to review with that. We'll be, we'll be reviewing that instead of that going forward. But anyway, the motion here is to say again to not, our talk out of that. Now, second, any other discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah?
Sir Hart, you're saying you do not, you do not support this, correct?
I really don't think I try.
This is quite, and hectic involved in whatever it is, but it's been reviewed by the law well. This is on the electronic monitoring fund. And the state has been paying for some of that in the past, their fund is, their fund is drained. And they were peeling out to counties to anticipate in that. Uh, did some research with C-Tech and apparently we could not find that, we haven't been able to determine the number of indigent residents we have in county, this is for them. But there's only seven counties, that's the last toll I got, only seven counties that have opted into this. And most counties are off and down, but we've got a September, or was it September fifteenth? I don't know, I got, I didn't, I, now it's been extended to June twenty-sixth, I believe. But, uh, I was concerned about this last time, and I think this census was, the census pretty well from the committees last time, I'm not speaking for them, the same to each not opt-in dogged out being involved in that. So, with that in mind, I, I need to report something to the state tomorrow as to your contention. I've got to contact the director's professional colleagues tomorrow and to give him a statement as to are we opting in or out. So, Mr. Miller, have a motion?
I'll make the motion without that.
Motion, opt out, do we ask second?
Second.
Second behind me. Thank you, thank you. Discussion?
Um, is your opinion on this?
This is not what it seems to be on the services, this is monies that would be more or less for the judiciary to determine, uh, the judges and probation would have to determine a, um, a person of indigency would be able to put the money to pay for a breathalyzer or what we know as a airlock machine, or if we had an electronic monitoring, um, program here in our county for either pre-trial or post-trial, uh, people. Then there would be a process just like is determined with our public, to appoint the public defender, uh, to represent, this would also take place as to have monies to pay for their monitoring services. Um, we're, this, this at first looked like monies that they were going to give us to create electronic monitoring service, but it's, it's, it's a, it's a subcategory, subcategory, uh, program in there, but it's a little more convoluted than what it is. So, we, we don't have this program, and like the mayor said, and I'm a citizen of the state that's involved in that, and I'm sure there will be a time to come back to that later as we grow, that's needed, we'll come back.
And I would mention that we will be reviewing a lot recently in the future as to probation and program, using Michael braces, and the monitoring more forward. I think for what, about seven dollars that he's sharing? Thank you. You can have the Michael braces, that's a little cheaper than what we're paying now to the parfrated person. And we've got a lot to review with that, and we'll be, we'll be reviewing that instead of that going forward. But anyway, the motion here is to say again, to not, our talk out of that. Now, second, any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman? Sir Hartman, you're saying you do not, you do not support this grant?
I really don't think I try.
And you do not support us?
I don't, I, if, if we got the money, what are we going to do with it? Because we don't have a program in place to, to, you know, if we applied for the money in the grant, we don't have a program to tell the state. We have a program and we have people with a need and their energy. So, we've kind of got the, this, this is, if that's my understanding, Jim, is that's why you get it. Um, it's a, when we first looked at it, we thought, oh, this is a program that might help us with electronic monitoring, but we found out it's for established programs to help pay for those that don't have money to go towards their monitoring and/or breathalyzer machines. And they, we don't have any stats, we don't have any, nothing that the circuit court clerk can provide, county probation or judges can provide as to indigency. In, in those cases, their criteria is, from my understanding, is quite different interpretation of indigency is what we would determine as indigent. So, it's, it's just something that we're, the judiciary and everybody's got to get trained up on four step into.
And my concern is, one, is the development of data, indigent data. It seems like that's pretty negative, it's going to be very difficult to determine. And second, I'm concerned about, you know, us possibly being in a position supplementing possibly other counties in regard to this fund, that may be a statewide fund or a fund spread among the counties participating.
I, I think what has happened, and there's been a, um, certain counties that might have went in with the legislature stating that they have a, over, don't indulgence of people that can't pay for where certain judges or DAs have been involved in cases. And, and the state has created a program to help offset that somewhere in the state, and they've had to offer it statewide. And that's, it's kind of got to cost pretense. I mean, if that's the wording that would be best used, but from my understanding, my education, speaking with the DA and others in the judiciary, we don't, um, we don't have any program that this would help, as of yet, I said yet.
And the county would be asked to put in money, so we have no idea what amount to put into this budget. We can't. Thanks, here. Now, Jack, do you have anything else? Okay. Any other comments, discussion?
Well, I would ask you.
Yes?
Your opinion on it, but I'm sure you're probably thinking the same line that.
Yes, I can hear from the shirt, probation and everything on that. The research is to the extent, extent we could, and we've got a lot of unanswered questions. We want to bid for a candidate, but I'm just not, we're not going to be ahead at his time for this, or this is the bid for a candidate right now. Other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if you could clarify the motion, please.
Pardon?
Clarify the motion.
Let's see. You have to drop out or put it off.
Was this a verbal? Not the electronic, right? We didn't tap the motion, right? Exactly. So, would it be easier for the recorders to tap that and have everybody go to note? Would that be easier? It's confusing to me if we're going to go yes or no, electronic.
That's why I didn't hit the motion, you still sort of wondered one, and I did it verbally, so we'd know what the motion was.
What, what were your motions out?
The motion is to opt out.
The motion is to opt out, so a yes, no would be to opt out. A yes, no would be to opt out. Declare that. Clear as mud? Second? Opt out. Any other discussion? Okay, motion to opt out. Okay, let's go, please. Yes, is motion to, the vote to opt out. And we'll have to notify the state of that tomorrow, huh?
All right. Ten H, discussion of compensation of personnel compensation committee.
Okay, so all of that forward discussion. So, getting out of motion discussion, which is the option for state.
So, I brought that up, so I guess I'll start the discussion. If you've been in any of the finance committee meetings lately, you've seen a big audience of employees from the county, and I think they did in the personnel compensation committee meetings as well. And so, we've been having a lot of discussion about that, and I've done some office visits and discussions with various folks. Uh, we seem to have a number of issues, which I'm not going to try to debate those all here, but even things as simple as the pay scale seem to be pretty confusing and doesn't seem to be being followed because I'm not sure everyone knows what follow basically means right now. Uh, but there's been some discussion amongst several of us in the committee meetings as to, is the personnel compensation committee functioning as we would like it to function to be in assistance to us? Uh, and so, I, I don't mean that comment as any knock on anybody who serves on that committee, I think everybody on that committee is trying to do the right thing. Uh, I think the question for is, do we have the right structure for that committee and is it turned, doing the right things? And so, I would just like to maybe propose a motion for this committee to, to instruct the legislative committee to examine the structure of that committee and make any changes. One of the suggestions has been suggested, perhaps to make the entire committee voting membership to be county commissioners only, and to have some of the head department heads be representatives but non-voting members. And the rationale behind that is not that we don't want their input, but rather perhaps the structure we have now is putting department heads in a difficult position of making recommendations on pay, and then if the commission doesn't approve it, they're kind of put in, in a bind with their own employees, uh, that you're supposed to represent us on the pay, and yet you didn't give us the pay raise. I don't know if that, that's a general feeling amongst all the department heads now, but those sort of issues are what we're looking at, so I just wanted to throw that out for discussion. And I think in general, we've got HRs that need issues to be dealing with, and maybe this is a way to get started with that conversation.
So, Lynn, you said something about a motion?
Arguing the right. So, I would agree that we ask the legislative committee to examine the structure of the compensation, uh, and was payroll compensation committee and recommend.
Or the compensation?
First down compensation committee and recommend, recommend changes back to this committee a later time.
Okay, you made a tangible motion.
Sir?
Number second, what did you make, what motion did you make?
Sir, you're second in your motion.
I'll second his motion.
Okay. Other discussion? With that in mind, okay, we'll call for the vote, let's go, please. Sir?
I have a comment, is, are we asking, I know we're going to vote on this, but once we get forward, we're going to ask for a time limit, time limit for legislative technical issues, or just something that's going to be legislated for the next, you know what I'm saying? Or just initial policy coming on.
We'll review and investigate and remember.
I think I have to probably before the worst on that question, sorry.
No, I think that's a good question, Captain, I'm going to admit my motion to your friend to it to say if you'd like to see a report in February, January? What do you think? February probably since we're short in holiday months. It would be nice to have something in time, and if it's going to affect the budget cycle.
Agreed.
Okay.
Further discussion? Not a call for vote, let's go, please.
Okay, reports, sustaining committees. Let's have it come here.
Do I?
Legislative committee?
Uh, good chairman, legislative committee, in the minutes of August twenty-sixth, which hopefully all commissioners have those minutes that were sent out. I just like to call attention to a few items that was recommended that the commission committees implement. And one is a form for recommendations to other committees. And it was a suggestion and recommendation to legislative committee that form be used by all committees, boards, and authorities for recommendation from one committee to another committee, or two to county legislative body. So, I would hope that all the committees, committees you're on or chairman of, that you'll see that that's done in association with the minutes. Another recommendation was signing record for committees, and it's a responsibility of committee chairman to get the form filled out and delivered to the mayor's office after the meeting. And all committees, boards, and authorities will use this, and it will be a basis for determining the pay for the members. And of course, we didn't address non-saltied employees issue tonight, but we will in the near future. And, uh, that must sign in to be paid and to have their attendance recorded. And I, I think that's something that's getting very important to members of this commission, that members attend to be members of major meetings, and there'll be a record of that so that your regular attendance is recorded. And any wanting, anyone that would like to check on that record, if they so. But it's also for a paid boardings of the leaders. Um, and I believe, uh, that covers the legislative committee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
House, what kind of creation?
Uh, I would just like to acknowledge our animal control officers. Uh, they have a dirty job.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, they, we have to rescue people there, and they're very dedicated, and they've seen some things here just our last year, and they've seen some things that I wouldn't want to see myself ever do. And, uh, but they are very dedicated and I want to acknowledge them. And also, I'd like to just give a thanks to the, uh, everyone that's part of this mission, for my tenure as, as mayor co-chairman, and, uh, for the encouragement and the acknowledgement that the big base took behind me when the mayor was absent, and, and, uh, my two meetings as, uh, chairman of the, the commission, and I was praying the whole time that the mayor was getting well, and exactly, I think the rest of us were, all you are too, so it's a blessing to have him back and to have you back.
Glad to be back.
Glad to be back instead.
Thank you, glad to be back instead. I didn't want to be out those two meetings, but I'm, thank you, sir. Okay, thank you.
Capitol Outlay?
And, excuse me, and on animal control, that is the work they do in this county. At two situations, we were dealing with today, that Hawk was Matt and Karen off, but I know at Lakewood Park the other day, they were involved in a situation where there was seventeen dollars, seventeen moved from that one place. And I think there's going to be the DA's, I guess, Sheriff, you know more about that than I would, but I think there've been seventeen counts of animal movement involved in that, so, you know, some of the work they get involved in, trying to, trying to nurse those dogs back to health and deal with them, whatever, I want to, I really, my answer to those ladies and all of it.
And I can say that we used to be on the six-plot initiative, now I did for animal control problem. We haven't been in it a long time. That finished for those.
But I think County Five is doing with our goal, ladies and gentlemen.
Yeah, and four and everybody's been on the fact that it's on pages, but one is thankful that, hopefully we'll figure out.
I hope so, yeah, for sure. We've got two outstanding officers who are working for the service.
And Capitol Outlay?
Yes, I'd like to report that our last Capitol Outlay meeting is, most of our meetings are dominated by, uh, our facilities maintenance supervisor, Robert Gillum, and his brother had very serious health issues, so he was not able to attend. So, we really, we didn't get anything from Robert this time, but we were, the, the two items that we had on our agenda was the, our training facility, which ran a gun, it's our home there. And, and a couple things I want to mention on this to you guys is that this, this is like what we did in act of our symbolic motion of intent, much like we did with the rail authority. We haven't committed anything that's totally contingent upon that grant being obtained now by the city of Mansionage, when we drafted, we actually thought we would, and it's a very minimal participation monetary on our part, which would be about five percent, and the numbers thrown out, we would only be a, which budget and finance would look at this net if they're successful, be like twelve, fourteen thousand dollars, which I think is, is the bargain. And I also didn't mention that our law enforcement agencies will be able to use this facility as well. There's some of those training exercises, they will be able to use that. And the other item on the agenda was the, uh, the city alderman, Robin Dunham, at Tallahoma brought our attention, a pretty severe surface water runoff issue at the library in Tallahoma, and we're, as soon as Robin's in the pocket and everything, we're going to look at that, we're going to hold up the Pagan project that we had produced for that parking lot, and if this water issue can be resolved, if it can, and that's it. Thank you.
Okay, law enforcement?
We have a meeting this Thursday at four thirty.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
Personnel compensation?
Uh, nothing much to report, we have a meeting the twenty-third of this month, Monday.
Twenty-third, Monday sixteen? I think it's Monday sixteen.
Monday sixteen. Monday sixteen. I didn't want to Monday, Monday sixteen.
And to support, the group will be here to, like the presentation.
We'll try to get them. Come on in.
Statements and announcements from the commission.
Yes, sure. The commission, and statements and announcement, commission.
I'd just like, like to ask the personnel compensation committee if they would to get us a written proposal that you'd like to see as far as the composition to the legislative committee, so we can sort of start talking about that. I know you have a meeting before our next meeting, uh, I don't know how busy you will be about it, but if you could do that, that would get us started, uh, pretty quickly on that. And lastly, I think, I think a lot of people in the audience, and a lot of people in the public are going to have a question. We voted twice tonight, did not come to a conclusion. I would like to see us come to some sort of conclusion, folks. One way or another, we, we need to make a decision. There are two very good candidates, and three really good ones. But we need to, we need to see if we can move past this. I've got to get to work in the morning, but I'll stay and vote all night if we need to. But we need to, we need to, we need to put this to bed and do this and get this done.
When the vote is over for tonight, on that, then we'll bring back the table and make a decision. You're going to have to make a decision then. You have the statements and announcement, please.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like, I think most everyone in this room does not need to be reminded of tomorrow's significance. It's a sad day, so everyone have a room and side, and party for the first fund.
And there will be a ceremony, uh, in the morning, a paper of days ceremony, they have these, they have annually on nine eleven at the Tallahoma Fire Station number one at seven thirty. Uh, so it's, it lasts until eight oh five.
I wonder more on that.
Just want to remind everyone, if you're not aware, this weekend in Tallahoma at the airport, there's a major event at the airport. The airline owners and pilots association, the OPA, which in Florida is a private pilot association, United States, they host two or three annual flights across the country. It's going to be in Tallahoma this weekend, Friday and Saturday, all day. The event is free, we are expecting. We are expecting over seven hundred private aircraft flying Tullahoma, so it's a great chance to showcase our county will be set up with the economic development, we're close to the industrial board, and well on the economic development board. And if you just want to see something cool, which I'm not gonna get to see, which is a football game, I have to take out my kid and the band, but Friday evening, there's going to be a light and drum show. You remember seeing that, like, at the Super Bowl, where there's a couple hundred drums, and they're all lit up? So, they're doing that Friday evening, sometime after dark, whatever that means. But, but go get on out and see a lot of aircraft, and there're gonna be some flying demonstrations over there as well. And if you happen to, have to be available, come by the booth and help us with the motor account.
Thank you, Lynn, for mentioning that. And this is a major event. It's my understanding, this weekend, Friday and Saturday. It's my understanding that there's only two flying events like this this year in this country, and we are selected for one of those Friday, here in our town. So, thankful of that, but this is that major event where the fly-ins and the planes, you can buy a vector, my grandson and I will be there, and we can do that every, when we can, and some of the flyovers, whatever, it is really, really, really impressive. So, I encourage, if you can, please come out and support that on Friday or Saturday. Thank you for introducing that.
Mayor?
Yes, sir, Tom.
Also, flying manufacturing associated with will have a nine eleven ceremony tomorrow at four p.m. If anybody is available, I think the Manchester industrial park, Mark Tower, I have.
I'll be there. Thank you, Tom. Appreciate that. Any other papers or errands? Okay, public comments? And I would like to ask that we limit our comments to no more than tell them a chance. Go ahead, Mike, um, thirty minutes of public, go ahead.
Real quick to the commission. I've served on the PNC com, uh, committee, uh, since taking office last year. I'm asking this commission to really dig into this issue of PNC. I know I've had several discussions at times of serving in commission. My personal opinion about the committee is it is putting myself as an elected official and some of our department heads in bad bind. It's causing me to pit against my fellow elected officials and their employees to make decisions that we basically are higher risk for. But for me to vote on somebody else's pay scale to go up or down, I just think is unjustified or unfair. I know that I, I wouldn't want somebody voting in large. I think that committee needs to be of the governing body in which you were elected to govern and maintain the financial responsibilities of this county. I'm voting to maintain the actual department head that I was elected to do. I'm honored that I got to circle and got a real education about some things, but we is, this is a very critical board. I question if the board needs to exist at the end of the day. Does the board responsibilities need to be busted up and passed off to help with recreation and budget finance? Does some of it need to be busted up and go to legislative? Those are your decisions that you make. I know when the board was created, or that committee was created, it was created, created, a standard for our county employees, but over the last several years, the county has forgotten about it. And the cost of living for our county employees hasn't been touched since 2007, and there's no way that we can financially change that overnight. I realize that, and I know that, and that's the reason I came off that board. I really wish that the committees and commissioners could really look into that. It's, it's pity our offices against one another. What we need to be unified. So, I'm opting to say to the audience, with my fellow elected commissioners and employees, to listen to what you decide to do, not me. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
And, and I just couldn't go along with what he said before, you know, we as commissioners should be on that committee, making that hard decision. We shouldn't put that on our department heads and our elected officials to be making those I just think that it should be, that's, that, that committee should be all commissioners making those hard decisions. That's what we're being elected for. We're elected to do that, you know? So, it should be us doing that, so, and that's why, you know, I think me and Lynn are on the same page on that, so that's why we, we decided to take it to legislative and let that work out.
Thank you, Tim. So, does that mean I can step off, but me is there? Thank you. Appreciate it. So, we knew that makes a pretty tough decision, that's what you know.
It is a tough decision. I would make, I would make that you step off, but you don't, you don't want to talk about it.
I don't technically talk about it.
I was talking that more for the sheriff and the other, the other department heads and stuff.
That makes some tough, tough decisions. I would like to, before we adjourn here, want to recognize Mr. Kelvin Shores, who is our deputy director of Coffin County Schools in the new position. So, Kelvin, thank you for being here and serving again. Any of us will do that, look welcome, if we're ready to come out here. Any other public comments? Public comments? One once, one twice, go public comments, and motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn by ten or something, seven, seven, eight, nine, all in favor?